To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, who is the standest, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening I have one proclamation I'd like to read. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas since 1868, Memorial Day has been uniquely an American day of remembrance, on which we pay our respects and honor the memory of more than 1 million Americans who died in battle and made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and our freedoms. And whereas we, in keeping with the traditions that have preceded us, many of us have friends and family members who have selfishly given themselves to the future of this great nation and who we honor this, on this day. And whereas these soldiers were someone's child, spouse, parent, and it is important that we remember every day in this great nation that our freedom came at a price. And whereas veterans have bravely served in all parts of the world, not only fighting for our freedoms, but for all mankind. And whereas the city of Bel Air joins with other cities throughout the state of Kansas and the United States of America in honoring those who have given their lives in recognition, recognizing that their sacrifices were noble, their heroism unparalleled, and their dedication to God and country unforgettable. Now I therefore, Jim Benage, by virtue of the power and authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim May 31st as Memorial Day in the city of Bel Air and do urge all our citizens to join in remembering our veterans. Next item on the agenda is determine agenda additions, and I would like for, ask for motion to add an item 13 dot 1, contracted employee compensation to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor? I'll motion to add the addition of contract employee compensation.
I have a motion by Dr. Schroder and a second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
They propose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item seven is consent agenda, and it contains only the minutes from the May 4th city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Elsop.
I motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Elsop and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item eight, discussion and approval of appropriations ordinance. The overall amount paid in this report is higher than usual due to the PBC principal bond payments to the Security Bank of Kansas, as well as interest payments in the state, to the state.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 21 dash 09. I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Dr. Schroder. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item nine, city requested appearances. We have three this evening, so we'll start off with Chief Atterberry.
Mr. Mayor, council, I have a couple of awards tonight for a couple of our officers. Uh, one is for Officer Brandon Gibson. On May, I'm sorry, on the 5th of January, officers were dispatched to a distraught person who is mentally unstable and having an acute situation. Uh, Officer Gibson and other officers arrived on the scene. The subject would open the door but locked his screen door and was threatening suicide. Uh, Officer Gibson spent a considerable amount of time, uh, listening to the man's concerns, uh, hearing him out and taking the opportunity to converse with him and getting him to open the door and come out. Officer Gibson then escorted the man to the hospital and stayed with him until staff took over and took control of him so that he could get the, the care that he needed at the hospital. So for that, Officer Gibson is being awarded the certificate of commendation from the Bel Air Police Department. The other, uh, award we have tonight is for Officer Joseph Trumbull. We want to recognize Officer Trumbull for the work that he's done. Uh, he is a part-time officer here in the city of Bel Air, and during our shortage of personnel, he took on many additional tasks. Uh, some of the things that he did was, uh, some administrative duties, a, working as the warrant officer, the, uh, the TAC, which is a, with our, our friends at the KBI, FBI, or the, uh, Kansas Highway Patrol, uh, and our computer systems. And he oversaw those and is still doing that. Evidence program, IT, uh, helping the lieutenant with background investigations for new hires, uh, running what we call triple I's or the information we need to, uh, investigate people and present to the DA's office for charging appointments. That while also keeping up his duties as a patrol officer for us. Uh, so, uh, without that assistance, we would have sunk. He, he really extended himself and did so in a very professional manner. He's being awarded the Bronze Medal of Outstanding Service tonight, and that goes to anyone who shall perform an act or acts that tangibly and conspicuously further the mission of the Bel Air Police Department and reflects notable tenacity and outstanding inventiveness or intelligence or diligence. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate the officers and their stepping up and helping with the citizens of, of the city. That's just very commendable. Thank you very much. Next, a couple of years ago, I attended the Kansas League of Municipalities Conference in Topeka, and one of our breakout sessions was on emergency management. Ever since then, I've been concerned that we have emergency management plan, which we do. And I was impressed upon me that the wrong time to get to know our local director of emergency management is when you have a local emergency. So just before the pandemic last year, Sedgwick County Association of Cities held a meeting at the Sedgwick County 911 Call Center. We also got a tour of the room where the local emergencies are coordinated. So Julie Stimson is the director of Sedgwick County Emergency Management Department. She is here to introduce herself and share how Sedgwick County Emergency Management works with Bel Air. Julie, uh, joined Sedgwick County in 2020 and previously worked at the KU School of Medicine in Wichita as the Associate Director of Safety and Emergency Management. It's good to finally meet Julie and, and learn more about how her department works. Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is very nice to meet you. Council members, very nice to meet you as well. It's always, uh, outstanding to meet folks when there is no disaster. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come and say a few words on changes we're undergoing right now under new management and some programs, um, that we're going to be bringing to life that, um, you and citizens may be interested in partaking in as things move forward. So first off, I am Julie Stimson. Um, as Mayor said, I am, been in position since 2020. I decided to join emergency management at the county right in the middle of the pandemic, so that was extra fun. But things are progressing, um, and we are able to finally start getting out again and kind of refocusing on emergency preparedness and response and recovery. And that's what I'm here to do, to talk about some of those key points. Um, we do all hazard plannings, and it is important for us to remember that there are several risks and hazards out in the community aside from, um, the pandemic. And right now, we're just kind of in the beginning of severe weather season, so we definitely want to take this time to remind folks to prepare, um, and take those special COVID precautions as necessary. So I don't want to get too long-winded. I just want to share some other programs that we have. Of course, we have the Emergency Operations Center, so if there were to be, um, any kind of a wide-scale disaster, we have a multi-agency, uh, Resource Center to coordinate efforts and make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and that we're getting things, uh, needed on the ground. Uh, we're the liaison with the state. Um, so we certainly, if things are happening in the city of Bel Air and you need support from the county, we certainly want you to read up, reach out to us, um, so that we can help find resources for you, um, and first responder agencies. We also have the outdoor warning systems, um, and emergency notifications. Um, I believe the city of Bel Air has one siren, if I'm correct.
I think we have one. I don't know if we have more.
Uh, so we do our test, weekly test every Monday. Um, I have my deputy director who was also new. He's been on board just about a month after I arrived. His name is Jonathan Marr, and he is taking a really hard look and analysis of our outdoor warning system sirens stuff. So you may hear from him, um, he is implementing an adopt a siren program throughout the county that if we have residents that have concerns, if the siren doesn't sound quite right to them, or if they think there needs to be more sirens, or something that we can do to help get notifications out, uh, myself and Jonathan will be the individuals to, to contact. So, um, we will be coming out and taking a look at all the sirens in upcoming months, um, just to kind of take a visual inspection, look at the sirens themselves, so. Public outreach, um, and we've had a lot of turnover in the past couple of years, and we may not have gone out to the communities as much as I would like. Uh, one of my missions and visions is to really get out, get to know the communities, provide education and training, help conduct drills and exercises, and make sure that we are all really prepared for the hazards that, that face us every day. We, as Mr. Mayor alluded to, we do have the emergency operations planned. Right now, the county is going through the comprehensive review that is due every five years. It was actually due in 2020, but they graced us with, um, an extra year to get that done. So we may be coordinating some efforts and contacting agencies as well, just to make sure we know what plans are and that we're up to date. And then we have several volunteer organizations, um, within our departments. Some have been kind of quiet, um, in the past few years, and we have plans to revitalize them. The big one is the Community Emergency Response Team, or also known as CERT, where we have training for our citizens to help each other out in those crucial first moments after a disaster. They'll get trained on basic first aid, light search and rescue, how we can help each other because truly the citizens and the neighbors are the first responders when stuff happens. It's to give that little bit of aid until true first responder agencies can be freed up. So we do, um, have plans to implement that program. We'll definitely communicate more details as we get those, um, things fine, uh, fine-tuned. I mentioned the Adopt a Siren program. We also are implementing our K-9 Search and Rescue Team. Um, we do have already some programs in place for that. Again, it's an asset, it's a resource. If we ever need it, contact emergency management and we'll get you coordinated with those assets. And then through the Health Department, we have the Medical Reserve Corps, um, that has been really active during this pandemic response. A lot of our volunteers at the vaccination sites, the points of distribution that we've been coming out to the communities to do the vaccinations and the testing, though, a lot of those are volunteers, average citizens who have stepped up to volunteer and help us get through this crisis. Um, the Medical Reserve Corps is definitely a, a huge organization right now, and we have more information if individuals are interested, we can certainly get them signed up. That is really, uh, the disaster declaration process, I don't get into the details, but again, let us help you if there's any kind of, um, if we have a disaster that impacts the city of Bel Air, if resources are getting exhausted, let the county know so that we can get ahead of it and start lining up resources to help respond to the emergency. So do not ever be afraid to call us. If you don't know how to reach us, call 911. They have our numbers. We're on call 24/7. So we are here to support you in the city of Bel Air, um, anytime you need us. So with that, I stand for any questions or if there's anything else you would like for me to talk about.
Well, I do appreciate the, uh, the outline of, of the services you offer. That's very helpful, and thank you for taking time out and coming up here and visiting with us this evening.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity, and if we can do anything for it, let us know.
Like I, like I said, I hope we never have to see you, but we do.
Exactly. Except for these light conversations and maybe some trainings. Absolutely. I hope we're never needed, but we're always here for you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Garver, uh, engineering staff is here to update us on the progress of the Woodlawn expansion.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and City Council. Uh, we're here about, oh, a month ago, six weeks ago, giving an update on the project, and, uh, fortunately we had more progress, so that's always a positive. Um, I brought a presentation today as well to kind of give you a little bit more insight of what's been going on, get you more feel of what's happening here. So with this, we'll start off with just progress in general. Here we go. So progress, so working day project, uh, we have used 50 of 75 working days, so about 67% from a working day standpoint, we are completed. On their last schedule provided in our last progress meeting, uh, we're on schedule, expecting about an early July completion. It may be sooner, but I don't want to lie to you and give you guys hopes up, so let's plan on early July. So that's very good to hear, especially with the work that we've been completing. It's pretty impressive, and I'm about to cover that here soon. I'll start off with the safety statement. Traffic control's been up and running, uh, really good, have good response. We've been monitoring that as we've discussed before. And, uh, you know, besides the minor traffic controls, our, uh, channelers get knocked down, we have those put up the next day, so it's always, always tended to. We've had some night work completed here recently. I'll go into more detail, but it was very safe, had their channelizers up, everyone had their proper PPEs on, um, it's communicated very well before they started. And, uh, so that's always a positive, we have night work going on. Uh, I put fire departments as well. We had some water shutdowns, uh, to complete the work we need to, to complete. So all the appropriate fire departments were notified, so I know what lines are inaccessible, which are accessible in case there is emergency. That communication's ongoing. Then lastly, I put a damaged underground electrical line, uh, late last week, there was a line that was not, or it was marked, it had an empty conduit above it, and then a line that was not marked was about 18 inches below it. It was an electrical line, and it did, they did nick it. But the important thing is, they got on the phone immediately, they did their safety, uh, interviews to see what happened, why it happened, how can they avoid it. Everybody was on site immediately, hopped right on it, took care of it, and within a matter of hours is back up. So destruction that happens, um, especially in a scenario like that where it was located and no one knew that was there, which we had x-ray vision, and, but they responded well and got it corrected efficiently. So I apologize for those who were out of power for a couple hours, but we were diligent about it and got that remedied. So next, items completed that we went through, um, the, the bulk of it has been large water valve work, 16 and 24 inch, um, those are considered pretty large. They're feeding a lot of customers. We had to shut down the water for those and do, uh, valve insertions and eventually do some down and unders. These valves are going to make it more easily to isolate smaller areas, so we're not impacting such a large volume of people. These operations took place from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, so it's all overnight work like I talked about. Tight deadlines, went really well, just like we planned for it to go. Uh, in all three scenarios that we had, the water was back on by 3:00 in the morning. Um, so no one woke up and didn't have a, the shower faucet turn on and no water come out, so I'm sure everyone would have heard about that. But lastly, I just want to give, uh, kudos to the whole team, um, everyone involved. It was outstanding communication, coordination, preparation. Um, you know, they were testing pumps weeks before, make sure our pumps were running, testing all the tools, prepping all the material beforehand to make it as most efficient process as possible. Um, construction is a, is a beast in itself, so the more you can do and prep for it, the better you are. And, uh, I'm diving a little bit deeper here with that. So like I said, we had three valves. The first one's a 24-inch southwest corner of 37th and Woodlawn. Um, partially shutdowns were Wichita as well as Bel Air, we're right there on that line. They had to pass out 850 notices, so if you think about that many, that's a, that's per property of how many people, businesses, shops, homes, everything was impacted by this. Uh, I think we got two phone calls on this, three phone calls maybe? So I mean, percentage-wise, that's pretty impressive when you do these. And like I said, had it done by 3:00 in the morning. Uh, next one was just east of Woodlawn, north of 37th, and that was about 350 tenants. This was a, a few days later overnight, same story, went smooth. Uh, the only hiccup on this, and I'll have a video showing it, is, uh, when they're cutting the old pipes, it's a concrete pipe, and it's very durable stuff. It's not easy to cut. It's not that PVC stuffy, you take a little bandsaw too and, and take care of it. Um, they had a hiccup here, and I'll explain that because it's pretty impressive. Um, the last one, it's a 16-inch just north of 37th, east of Woodlawn. That one had 150 tenants impacted. So this is very important work, because if there's ever an issue in the future, you guys do have more valves now to isolate these large lines that, you know, feed booster pumps and feed a big volume of people. So it, it was just really impressive to see the coordination and the execution of the plan. And it turned sideways, so I apologize for that, so I hope you don't get a kink in your neck. This is a, a bandsaw, that's why I used to call, or like to call it, made for co, for cutting concrete. The first one went smooth, cut right through that pipe in a, you know, a matter of a few minutes. Um, they gotta make two cuts, like pull that middle portion out, so they can dislodge the other pipes. The second valve and the third valve, that thing actually broke down. And so this Wichita Cutting and Coring Company didn't skip a beat, whipped out their concrete chainsaws, hopped down in that water, and they just, they got it done. And it was actually impressive, because I think they had more urgency. I mean, think about if we, if we hit 6:01 AM, that phone's gonna be going off the hook. I'm sure you all are gonna get a bunch of phone calls, so if you didn't get any, I'm glad. So it was just an impressive execution. Um, couldn't be more proud of the team on that, on all honesty there. So what's next? We have Waterline 1, which they've been working on. They started more towards the railroad tracks, working north towards Quill Ridge. They're gonna continue that even further north to Quill, or past Quill Ridge to Perryton. Waterline 2 cuts across Woodlawn, uh, just to give you a sense of where they're gonna be working this next month timeframe. Uh, we'll have boring operations, so you see some drill rigs out there, um, off the side in the ditches to get the pipe underneath Woodlawn. And then Waterline 7 and 8 is our next big obstacle we have. We just had a big coordination meeting this afternoon with City of Wichita, Bel Air, Donlenger, MKC, everybody. It's a, it's a, we call it down and unders. We have this proposed storm sewer, and we gotta get these 16 and 24 inches down and under. And so talked about the process, the plan of attack, step by step, minute by minute, um, getting the weeds on that. So it's a good discussion. We're, we'll carry it on tomorrow at our progress meeting and, uh, lock that plan in, but that'll probably happen in the next few weeks, uh, if our, if our plan goes as, as we intended to. And I, I put this on here, I just wanted to give a statement to everyone here in Bel Air and even North Wichita, but mostly Bel Air. Uh, thank you. Uh, we have traffic control up, we know it's not the most convenient thing, we've done water shutdowns, we dam, or the contractor hit a quote-unquote unmarked line, got it corrected. So just thank you for working with us, um, and we're hoping that the diligence that has been putting forth to this project is, is getting noticed, because, uh, everyone a part of here, a part of the team really cares about what they're doing and make sure it's done right. We don't want any impacts happen to you guys as, as much as we can limit. So with that, I will stand for questions or any comments or anything on what's been done so far.
Well, I did hear about the power line issue.
I'm sure you got that phone call.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't anything bad. It's just a comment that it happened and, and that, uh, it apparently wasn't the contractor's fault.
No.
It was a mismarked line, so.
No, even everybody came out and they saw what's going on, and they didn't even, they didn't even use the words that sometimes get used during that time. They saw what it was and, and they understood completely. It was, no one could have known it was there. And, um, they jumped right on it, and it was corrected as soon as, as fast as I've ever seen it done, so.
Well, we do appreciate you guys keeping this project as smooth as we can to, uh, as least disruptions we can have. It's always helpful. Any other questions for Garver team? Okay, well, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
I do have, uh, a couple citizens' concerns that would like to come and speak with us this evening, so Mr. John Barquette. Rule on the, on this is that we allow three minutes for, for you to address the council, and I do set a little timer here just to help keep us on track. I do set a timer here just to help keep us on track. So if you hear it, if you hear.
I'm not planning to preach a sermon, so.
Okay.
I'll make this fairly quick. First of all, I very much enjoy living in Bel Air. I think you've got an excellent police department. I've lived in seven cities and three time zones. I've seen a lot of stuff over the years. You've got good parks, good city to live in. Very minor complaint. A while back, a letter was sent out saying that all signs in the yard have to be gone. I can understand that for political and business signs, but there are a few of us who had signs that said, in three languages, "All are welcome here, we're glad you're here", welcoming type signs in the yard. So I come in to check, to see what it would take to do that. Well, you fill out a form, pay 50 bucks to put a sign in your yard. Now seriously, my conservative side says, "Are you that hard up for the money? And do you not trust your citizens to be responsible in this regard?" That's my concern. If you want more, I can talk more, but I'll, I know you got nothing else to do tonight.
No, I appreciate that. I, I've seen those signs around, and I, I understand your concerns, so thank you.
I'm sure there's some history as to why the rules are, because from Las Vegas to Seattle, other small towns, there are no rules around that.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. And then we also have, uh, Mr. David Landall, who would like to speak with us this evening. And I forgot to say.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I did have less than a three-minute speech written, but then when you, I start hearing all this stuff, there's other things to talk about. I feel a little bit slity, because I don't think I got the letter he got, uh, on our sign ordinance. I did get a note on the front door that I had to take my private drive sign out of my driveway, and I removed it, and people kept turning, and I've spent $10,000 on that driveway or better, and people keep coming up, turning around in my driveway and parking in front of my house, and then going to the neighbors when his driveway is empty for church service, Bible service, Mary Cave service, smoke parties, uh, other parties and stuff. And there's three ways to get turned around there without driving in my driveway. And why they want mine so bad? I had to go out there the night and put up crime scene tape across my driveway, just to keep people out of it. And I didn't build that. I built it for me to get in and out of the driveway, and I had to put it six inches thick close to the city, and it cost me extra money, but anyway, I did it. But our street's always clogged up, and I had my no parking sign up too, which I was pretty proud of, and they didn't like that either. Uh, I've never seen a sop, copy of the sign ordinance, and they tell me there are certain signs that are permitted. If I can pay 50 bucks and put my do not parking sign back up again, I'll do that. It's worth the 50 bucks. But they clogged that street up there, and I, I, the other question I got is on parking. Is our ordinance that we can't park within 30 foot of a stop sign, or is our ordinance that we can't park within 30 feet of an intersection, or are the intersections even considered? Because a lot of the neighbors complained they can't get around the corner. Kruger and Batten, that's just about to get a little bit worse. If the city council listened to us 25 years ago, Batten wouldn't be a problem right now, but they didn't, so it's a problem. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there on the, on the signs. Uh, oh, the other thing is, I wondered why I was singled out for no parking sign when I see others in Bel Air that have their no parking signs, and they haven't been told to remove their, or private driveway signs, and they haven't all been told to remove theirs. And I don't know why I was singled out, but I do know, but I ain't telling. So anyway, uh, it just keeps me busy on church nights and Bible nights and stuff, putting my crime scene tape up. The real reason I came, and I guess she's still here, I had the opportunity to call 911 one night, and there was a refrigerator with the door on, unsecured in the middle of Glendale. This has been a few years ago, it's not under her. I called 911, and they've got a series of questions. Some of them don't really seem pertinent. They asked me what color the refrigerator was. I said, "It don't matter. You go to Glendale and 47th Street, there's a refrigerator sitting in the middle of the street. Whatever color it is, it don't belong there." She said, "I'm sorry, we gotta ask those kind of questions." Anyway, uh, they was nice about it. One other thing I thought of while I was sitting here, we got a lot of dead trees in Bel Air, disease, pine needle disease, and nobody's doing anything about it. My neighbor cut his down, now he got no place to take the brush. But I see several as you drive up the street where there's dead pine trees, and I don't know whether the proper thing to do is leave them there and leave the beetles keep eating on them, or whether to take them down, let the beetles move to a different tree. But anyway, uh, dead pine trees will fall over in 30, in three years, and I can testify to that, because I had one in my backyard that did it. They just rot, don't look bad, but they just rot off and away they go. The other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit, I thought she might do it, as, as a city, this is a question, done anything with EMS in this town, heard anything about EMS? One night, the, and, and I really don't know that what I'm saying here is, is 100% true, but it's the rumors I heard anyway, is that the station at K-96 and Oliver, which, or K-96 and Hillside, which normally serves Bel Air, was empty because they didn't have crews to man it. The crew from Park City, which backs them up at 53rd Street on the other side of K-96, was down in Derby. Now, I have a heart attack, and I'm getting older, by the way. If I have a heart attack and call 911, who in the hell's gonna show up? You know, we pay for 911, and I just wonder if the city's aware. I think there's a couple people trying to make themselves fatten their wallet by getting a private service in here. I might be wrong there, but I bet money I ain't, because there's politicians involved. So anyway, I think we ought to be paying attention to what, and I wonder if the city has paid attention or heard anything about what they're doing to. and I wonder if the city has paid attention or heard anything about what they're doing to man these EMS stations. And it kind of aggravates me that they'll go build a new one and they can't man it. And yeah, the fire department can come, but you know, the fire department can't do everything either. So I I just I'm just a little curious about what's going on. I think that the city, somebody here at the city ought to be a little bit more involved with that. And with that, my three minutes probably up.
Yep, there there.
Thank you.
I do know there is an EMS station on Rock Road that was built within the last two years. So there is one over there, but to your point, I I don't know about this other.
If they're not men, we wasted money.
Right.
They wasted money, but it's my money they're wasting.
Well, there's an ours too.
So yeah, yours too. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Move on to council member reports. Mr. Smith, would you have a report this evening?
I have no report.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. Elsa.
No report.
Mr. Schroder.
I have no report.
Okay, everybody's quiet tonight. Okay, I have a couple things. So I do understand tomorrow is Mr. John Welch's birthday. So happy birthday to Councilmember Welch. I also want to commend the Glenwood Owners Association, which is an HOA, for working Saturday, May eighth, clearing some brush from the creek that runs south of Forty Fifth between Rushwood and Frittilary, if I'm saying that properly. Clearing such brush helps reduce the chance of flooding. We really appreciate the people in Glenwood for taking this initiative to help improve our city. Public Works followed up with this by removing the cleared brush. It was a great team effort of the HOA and city working together for our common good. I attended the WAMPO meeting on May eleventh via Zoom. Our own Ty Lasher did a great job presenting the city of Bel Air with a summary of our growth and future needs. Eleven developments in work right now. That's really great news. So WAMPO's last financial audit has two findings of significant deficiency for 2020. This is down from six findings in the prior year and these and these are significant deficiencies. Issues are of less significance than material weaknesses. I know that's kind of more oddities type of of talk, financial oddities, but it's it's definitely an improvement in in the way that WAMPO finances are. So I understand this, the material weakness is considerably more concerned than significant deficiency. I did question the review of one of the findings with regard to unrestricted access to accounting system and the ability to authorize transactions. The executive committee is still working on that with WAMPO staff and the auditors to find a process to remove or significantly reduce the significant deficiency. So the concern here is that the ability of an unscrupulous person misusing funds. So we're we've we've all heard of these things occurring in businesses and government. And I don't want WAMPO to be on the news of the story of that nature. KDOT did state that the East Kellogg KTA project will wrap up yet this year. Seems like that's been worked for a very long time. It also is the resurfacing on Interstate one thirty five northbound of from Kellogg to Seventeenth Street will continue into June on weekends. Some of this work rolls over to Monday or Tuesday. So you do see that some of that roll over. I had an email discussion with the Sedgwick County Clerk's Office to gain a better understanding of the effects of Senate Bill thirteen and what appears to be some middle levy creep that we've we've seen on our tax bills. As I understand now, I understand Senate Bill thirteen, I'm okay with this new law. I think it makes the property tax transparency process more cumbersome than it needs to be, but it is workable. The bad part is that the county has to send out additional tax notifications every year. So that's going to initially cause confusion with taxpayers. And my fear is it will eventually just be another notice to be ignored unless some tax authority really makes a major change in revenue requirements. On the middle levy creep, what was being observed is that our official middle levy is forty five point seven three, but the effective middle levy in twenty twenty tax bills was forty five point seven nine eight. So it's a little bit higher and in twenty nineteen it's forty five point seven seven four. Again, a little higher than our our official middle levy. In the years twenty sixteen through twenty eighteen, the effective middle levy was less than the official middle levy. What I learned is occurring is that our budget can't provide the official budget to the state and county. And in November, we do that in October and August, but in November, the county also sets the final final appraised value of properties. You get that notice in March, but people do appeal some of those. And so we they nobody really knows what the final number is going to be until November. So then they take that final number and compare it to the budget and say, okay, this is the middle levy that we've authorized for this year. And that's why you see that middle levy creep. So it was a good educational process for me. I I was glad to learn it. It seems like a lot of trivia in a way. So Bel Air hasn't raised the middle levy and the effective rate will change up and down the official middle levy based on these appraisal adjustments. The citizens should keep in mind a couple of issues. The property tax bill we get from the county includes taxes for the state, the county, schools, including school bonds and libraries. On my tax bill from twenty twenty, Bel Air is only thirty one percent of the total tax bill. The other sixty nine percent is for these other taxing authorities. So increases in appraised value in general have more effect on our property tax bill than changes in the effective middle levy. As long as we're not changing the middle levy ourselves, right? Okay, the official middle levy has not changed since twenty sixteen. So in my case, my Bel Air tax bill in twenty twenty increased fifty cents due to the middle levy creep from forty five point seven three to forty five point seven nine eight. But I also had a fifty nine dollar and nine cent increase due to the appraised value increase. So both of these increases were outside of the control of the city of Bel Air. We're in control of this. We don't get to set the appraised value. We don't get to set the the what happens in November. We don't have any control over any of that. So we need to maintain fiscal constraint, but we we should also beware of those those things with those with those tax bills. On May fourteenth, I signed a partnership agreement with the Sedgwick County that allows our police to utilize the law enforcement records management system, which contracts with the city Sedgwick County and allows the city of Bel Air to access the database at no cost to Bel Air at this time. There could be add-ons to the system at a later date that may require some cost sharing. However, at this time, we're just being set up, so we don't know if that or what add-on cost will be. The contract does have a thirty day notice to terminate the agreement. Last week was National Police Week. So I'd like to read what our Congress, US Congressman Ron Estes said in his weekly update. Our law enforcement officers answer the call of duty to protect our communities every day. Whether it's maintaining order in the streets or prosecuting criminals, these men and women are heroes that are important to ensure our safety. It is truly unfortunate the police are receiving a lot of hate in the mainstream media. This is unacceptable considering their invaluable contributions to our society. These heroes should be lifted up, not condemned and targeted for attempting to keep our community safe. Now more than ever, we need to support our law enforcement officers. I challenge you to thank the cop this week and show them the appreciation they deserve for the job that they do for us. I echo these sentiments of our congressmen. We support our police and truly appreciate the work they do in Bel Air as ambassadors of our city. Sedgwick County COVID positive test rates started downward again, which is a good thing. So most recently, the peak was on May first at five point two percent of those tested being positive. Latest number is four point two percent. KDHE has also seen similar results. KDHE is also reporting just under forty percent of Kansas have been vaccinated. Kansas have received just under two point six nine six million doses with one point one six three million first doses administered and almost nine hundred three thousand second doses. So we continue to make progress in this area. It's certain that the vaccine is a major contributor to the reduced positive test rate. I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In conjunction with your explanation about taxes and the the changes, the Senate just passed Senate Bill fifty, which they were able to pass it overriding the governor's signature. So you had enough bipartisan support to get it passed. What this bill does is it allows the state to collect taxes for out of state realtors who have an electronic presence in the state and who are collecting gross receipts of more than a hundred thousand dollars, such as maybe an Airbnb like or a Amazon like facilitator. So starting January one, those companies and similar companies will be required to remit sales to the state and localities. As Mayor was saying, our any local tax we received is is handled through the county and dispersed through some proportionate share with the county. So it'll be interesting to see if this new bill increases the amount of taxes we get based off of purchases made by online purchases or other purchases that qualify made in Bel Air. Another bill that got passed during the veto session had to do with state liquor laws. And one relevant portion is that Sunday sales, cities can pass their own ordinances that would allow Sunday sales now as early as nine AM. So I have to go back and check and see how early alcohol can be sold on Sundays in Bel Air, if at all. But if you wanted to change it at this point, you could. Another change that will be required is that the state has removed the residency requirement for the application process. I don't know if you remember with Dollar General, we had all those issues trying to find an in-state resident for the organization. That requirement's gone, as you might understand why, because sometimes it's not feasible. So we will have to make those amendments to our codes to correspond and comply with this law because it it applies to every every city of the of the second class. So we're we're not under we're not free under home rule to exempt ourselves. So we'll be making that update. But those are the two that two bills that made it through veto session that are relevant and will impact the way we do business.
Thank you for that update. Move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind our citizens that as the proclamation, the mayor read, will be closed in observance of Memorial Day on May thirty first, city offices will be. And I hope everybody was able to get their unwanted items out to the curb last Saturday and and everything got picked up. Haven't heard of any people that were missed, but if they were, let us know. And the good thing is we'll have another one this fall. So if you didn't get things out or you're gonna have some things as you're cleaning up the garage this summer, we'll have another one this fall. So there'll be another chance. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Next item is twelve ordinance resolutions and the final actions. So with interest rates being exceptionally low as well as increased land sales, the city is moving forward with refinancing the current land debt. Estimates show an interest rate savings of over one percent, which equates to cash savings of around six hundred thousand dollars. And I think that Mr. Pope has got better news for us than that. So he's going to be here just to speak with us in just a second. This refunding issue includes an additional three point six six million dollar equity contribution generated from the recent land sales and allows the city to restructure annual payments, creating budgetary savings each year. Kevin Cowan, Gilmore Bell, and Adam Pope from Columbia Capital are here to explain the actions and answer any questions. That's about mine.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Adam Pope. Excuse me, Adam Pope, Columbia Capital Management. We are the city's financial advisor. And this morning at nine thirty, we accepted bids on behalf of the City and the Public Building Commission for the refunding of the currently outstanding twenty seventeen bonds. You can see in the handout I just gave you is a summary of those results. Kind of the top left corner shows that we received four bids. The winning bidder was Robert W. Baird, which has frequently purchased city bonds in the past. Their interest rate was one point, excuse me, eight seven eight percent. We had been expecting somewhere in the two point two to two point three percent range, so quite a bit better than we thought. A great result, a good day to be in the market. Below that, we show kind of a summary of the sources and uses. You can see that equity contribution that the mayor mentioned of one point six six million from the recent land sales. The the amount for underwriters discount, which is their compensation, other costs of issuance. And the bonds were purchased with what's called municipal bond insurance. So there's a premium for that. That cost was all included in 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 the bid by Baird. And then the deposit to the escrow fund. So there will be a deposit made to the escrow fund and that will be used to pay the debt service on the existing twenty seventeen bonds until they're eligible to be called, which is May of twenty twenty two. So those bonds will no longer be a an obligation of the the city or the of the PBC. They'll be paid out of that and you only have to deal with these new bonds. Over on the right hand side, there's a summary of the refunding results. You see the old net debt service. Ted Henry asked me to show this prior to the redemption that was made on five one of this year. There was some additional money from land sales and there was about one point four million in bonds that were redeemed at that time. You can see the 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 shape of the the debt service on the twenty seventeen bonds was kind of an upward sloping and then it was going to level out because of the successful sale of land and the elimination of the tax lid. When the seventeen bonds were issued, that was in the midst of the tax lid legislation. We were unsure how that was going to affect the ability of the of the city to budget and to to collect taxes for that. So we had that shape. I think the discussions with the council and Ted and Ty came to the conclusion that it'd be better for budgetary purposes and planning purposes to kind of just create a level debt service. So we we use this opportunity to do that. You can see kind of once you get to that 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 leveling off in twenty twenty three, we went from about one point five five million in in annual debt service down to one point one five million in annual debt service. So just shy of four hundred thousand dollars in savings per year. So all in all, a wonderful result for the for the city. Happy to answer any questions you may have about about the about the transaction.
Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. One, the the bonds here, are these callable?
Yes, they are. They are callable in in eight years. So in in May one of twenty twenty nine, they're callable, but we also maintained the what's called an extraordinary redemption provision. You may remember in the twenty seventeen bonds, a portion of those bonds are are have the ability to be called at any time at the city and the commission's discretion with using proceeds from from land sales. So we're able to keep that within there. So that's land sales of any land owned by the city or of the of the of the land bank. So you know, if if there's any sales between now and and whenever, you can you can use those proceeds to redeem bonds and and maybe even shorten the maturity. There's no restrictions on the on the amount. It could be, you know, as little as five thousand dollars or all the way up to to a million or whatever. It's really just at the at the city's discretion to have that flexibility, which is it's great and really didn't didn't cost you much, as you can see from the interest rate. We were we were a little bit concerned on that because that's a kind of a non-standard provision. But the market is 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 very very hot right now for uni-bonds. There's not a lot of them out there and there's a lot of money wanting to be put to work. And so we were able to maintain that flexibility without without any interest rate penalty.
The the other question I had, I think if I'm remembering correctly, there was a portion of the original bonds that we weren't able to call or redeem right away. And there was going to be a section of money that had to just be kind of be set off to the side for approximately a year that we were going to be kind of paying interest on twice, once for the old bond and once for the new bond. And I'd asked Ted about the analysis on, you know, how much would the interest rate have to go up to make that no longer a good deal for us? Can you talk about your analysis of that?
Yeah, so you're talking about the escrow fund. So yeah, so 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 the 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 twenty seventeen bonds, the call date on those is May one of twenty twenty two. And so we have to fund this escrow fund that will that will pay for those bonds in the meantime. And there there is what you call negative arbitrage because those bonds, I think the average the average coupon on them is, I think it was like three point six percent or something like that. And today we took bids on the there's treasury securities that'll be held in that escrow fund. And as you all know, short term interest rates right now are effectively zero. I think the the total portfolio yield on those securities is about three basis points. So there is a mismatch there. But yeah, we looked at kind of the the call. If you waited until next year. But yeah, we looked at kind of the, the call, if you waited until next year, closer to that call date, that, you know, we're not, I've, I've ceased trying to predict what happened with interest rates. Because if you asked me in 2017 if we were, would be able to refund these bonds a, a year early and have interest rate savings across the board, I would've said you're, you're crazy. But, you know, rates now are, are lower. We're basically still at historic lows. We've seen them go off a little bit, but if you look over the last 30 years, they're still, still a pretty, pretty low. But that being said, you know, we do expect interest rates maybe at the end of this year, going into next year, certainly the beginning of next year, beginning to see some creep up. And we have seen kind of the 10-year, which in these bonds, you can see the final maturity is 2034. We have seen some upward movement there. So we looked at it, and I think, you know, the, the negative arbitrage ended up being, you know, we felt that, that now would be a great time to act. If you, if you look on a, on a net present value basis, you know, kind of discounting the savings back to the, to the present day, it's about a 7% savings, a little bit over 7%. And kind of the industry standard to do a refunding is anywhere between 3% and 5%. You say, go ahead and do it. So at 7%, we thought, you know, you're well above that threshold. So we just thought that, you know, acting now with the right environment that we have now, lock in these savings, able to reshape kind of the, the debt service, that it, that it made sense to go ahead and, and act now and take advantage of, of the interest rate environment rather than gambling and waiting till, till next year and maybe losing, losing some of that savings and some of the momentum that exists in the municipal market right now. So after, you know, looking at all that, decided that it was the best time to act, act was now, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Pope? Hearing none. Do you have any questions for Mr. Gallin? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Bel Air, Kansas to enter into a supplemental lease with option to purchase, number two dated June 2, 2021, which supplements a lease with the option to purchase between the city and the city of Bel Air, Kansas Public Building Commission dated April 15, 2010, whereby the city will continue to lease from the Public Building Commission certain property, approving the form of said supplemental lease with option to purchase number two and authorizing the execution thereof and certain related documents and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Dr. Schroder. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Move on to item B. The original agreement for engineering services for Phase 2 improvements of the Villas at Prestwick improvement did not include construction observation services. The MKEC has performed construction observation in Phase 1 of the Villas at Prestwick and all three phases of the courtyards at Elk Creek. The costs associated with the project will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments to the benefiting lots. The city engineer, Ann Stevens, is here to explain services and answer any questions.
So Phase 2 of the Villas at Prestwick, for those who don't recall, there is the long cul-de-sac and the three kind of short driveways, so to speak, on the east side of the picture up here. The horseshoe-shaped project was built two years ago, I believe, and is filling in with homes. That is getting pretty close to full, so the developer is ready to start the second phase. MKEC has been working on the design for this project. They're getting pretty close to being done with that, and I suspect that we will be bidding it out in the next month. So we're, we're definitely in need of construction phase services for the observation to ensure that the project is built accordance with Bel Air standards and in accordance with the plan documents. It has been our practice to, to use the design engineer for the construction observation on subdivision projects around town unless there's extenuating circumstances. In this case, there are no extenuating circumstances. We've had very good luck with working with MKEC. We've worked very closely with them on several construction projects that the mayor has mentioned and recommend that you accept their contract.
Thank you. Any questions for Ann? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion to approve supplemental agreement number one from MKEC in the amount of $43,497, the Villas at Prestwick Phase 2 improvements, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Schroder and a second from Mr. Elsaw. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Eight is executive session, and I would like to ask for a 30-minute executive session.
How, how long?
30 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to, I got that all out of order. I motion to go into an executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of matters of non-elected personnel related to council employees pursuant to the KSA 75-4319, exception for the same. The meeting for the period, period will be for a period of 30 minutes, and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 8:28 p.m.
I'll second. Motion by Dr. Schroder and a second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. An executive session for 30 minutes.
We have a motion by Smith and a second by Mr. Elsoff. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Back to Executive session for thirty minutes.
Well, the executive session, no binding action was taken. Call the meeting back to order. And in our discussion, I think we've needed to amend the agenda.
Uh, can we table?
I'm sorry?
Can we table the added agenda item?
We can do that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to table the agenda item, which is contracted employee compensation.
Motion by Dr. Schroeder to table and second by Mr. Welch. Need discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. So, do we have item fourteen? Do we have anyone have future issues discussions? We need to sit for another agenda. Hearing none, go on to adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, a motion will adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Elsaff to adjourn, second by Mr. Smith. Need discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote.